All right, it's 7:01. I'm gonna call the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen's Order. This is a budget workshop. All members are present. Tonight, we have something like seventy percent of the town spending that we're gonna go over. So it's gonna be a full evening. We've got social services, senior services, park and rec, and the elderly commission, then DPW sanitation, town property, roads, IT, and the building commission. And bringing up the caboose is the police department, police commission, emergency management, and communications. So let's dive right in. And I'll recognize the community services director, Melissa Maltese, and see which one of her budgets she would like to start with.
Good evening, everybody. Jason, can I share my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. This is my first time doing a PowerPoint over Zoom, so apologies in advance if I seem a little nervous. Okay, so as Jason said, I am presenting the community services budgets this evening, as well as the elderly commission. So the first one I will start with is senior services. Give you a minute to get to that page if you need to. We all set? Okay. So at the East Windsor Senior Center, it's a focal point for the seniors in our community. They visit us daily for a variety of needs, from lunch, Medicare, bingo, movies, coloring, game days, senior wellness, yoga, monthly foot care, and blood pressure, sugar screenings, and appointments with our Choices counselors. We also offer a dialeride program, which is our transportation coordinator's position. So that is for seniors that are sixty years of age or older or eighteen years of age and currently on social security disability. I'm happy to announce again that we are receiving a new twenty passenger bus, and it is on its way, thanks to a hundred percent grant-funded fifty-three-ten grant. So that will add to our fleet and allow us to take one off the road fairly soon, we hope. During the pandemic, we did not stop transportation at all. In fact, we actually just changed what we were transporting. We transported meals instead of people. So our meals program, which I'll get to in just a second, actually operated completely via our transportation system, and town staff delivered meals instead of our Meals on Wheels program volunteers. During the time that we were, I would say, closed, we were still able to do seven thousand six hundred and fifteen round trips. And that's people, so that's not meals. We were still able to take everyone to doctor's appointments and the different services that they need, with the exception of hairdressers or anything that we determined non-emergent needs. In fiscal year 2020, 2021, we provided six thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight round trips. And that was seven hundred and twenty-seven trips different, which shows how much that our transportation clients really rely on our services. And we are seeing an increase in the use of our transportation and signing up new clients weekly at this point. So we've been trying to get the word out that the service is here for our community and encouraging people to sign up to use the service. Fifty-dollar suggested donation for the entire year to use the service. And again, it is a suggested donation. Just some data that goes along with where we go. We go on medical trips. We haven't been doing kind of the socialization trips because we aren't doing what we call our field trips right now, but we are back to transporting our seniors back to the center for their daily lunches and activities. On occasion, we do have to deny some trips based on staffing, their location, the frequency of them having to go to the same location sometimes plays an issue because we're not able to take the same people to the same location every day due to other people booking appointments. But we have been able to get a little more flexible in response time. So in the past, it used to be seven days. We've lowered that so that we can take more people. In regards to nutrition, we work with the Community Renewal Team out of Hartford to offer our Meals on Wheels program, as well as our congregate meals. This year, the suggested donation from CRT went up to three dollars instead of two dollars and fifty cents. So we've been operating that in back to full capacity as of August and doing our in-house congregate meals again. This shows that even during the pandemic, the need for nutrition and nutritious meals was still there. So in April of 2020, we shifted our focus with CRT. And from April to August of '21, we did congregate and Meals on Wheels delivered by town staff. And they also gave us emergency shelf-stable boxes, which we're able to provide in anticipation of a possible shutdown by CRT. But thankfully, they never shut down, and we still operated as normal. So we're starting to see some of those Meals on Wheels numbers go down a little bit as people come back to the center to eat lunch. Some of our accomplishments this year. Obviously, we had to think outside the box to continue to operate. So we were able to host a number of outdoor activities, such as bingo and yoga. We utilized the pavilion at East Windsor Park to host our yoga and strength and balance classes so that it was covered during the summer months, as we don't have any awnings for us to utilize at the senior center right now. We participated in National Senior Centers Day in August and worked with Brookdale in November for providing chicken pot pie and cheesecake to our seniors. We continue to do our drive-throughs that you would see throughout the year and just try to bring some encouragement and positivity to our seniors' lives during this pandemic. So all the pictures that you will see, their other drives drove to us at the senior center or on our routes, we would drive to them and drop off to them if they couldn't get to us. Our goals for this upcoming year is to lower our senior age requirement to fifty-five. We would like to do that in hopes of attracting more seniors, specifically because we have the fifty-five and older housing developments in town. So we'd like to be able to be a marketable location for those active seniors to come to. We would also like to start offering more intergenerational programming with the school system and multicultural offerings potentially with the diversity committee. And we'd also like to create a vision and plan for a larger center to encompass a community center for all three of the departments that I administer to Occupy, which Jason touched on in his budget presentation. So we are looking forward to the re-establishment of the elderly commission in order to create that vision. We did a quick survey of our seniors and asked them, why do you come to the center? What would you love to see at the center in the future? And what do you love about our center? And the overall theme tended to surface around food and friends. So that obviously makes us feel like we're completing our mission of both social, emotional, and nutrition being expectations of being met. So some of the things that they would like to see are more activities, longer hours, bus trips, larger spaces. We did lose part of our library due to us having to spread out workstations, but we're making it work, and everybody still enjoys their time at the center. These are my budget requests for this year. So you'll see in FY 2223, the really only changes have to do with the part-time salary increase request, and that is the two percent that the permanent part-time office staff and driver we would like to give to. And as well as I have two employees left that are receiving the longevity benefit. And that's contractual. In regards to programming, we are asking for eleven hundred dollar increase as our bingo machine needs to be repaired. During COVID, we tried to have it repaired, but due to the shortage of microchips and motherboards, we weren't able to have that successfully completed. So we are working to hopefully get that completed fairly soon. We did reduce, excuse me, reduce the travel line in its entirety due to the access of town vehicles. We feel that we have plenty of access to vehicles. Staff knows that if they have to go to any trainings or educational opportunities, they are to take a town vehicle to those and leaving their personal cars in the parking lot to do so. And then the last thing is just a two hundred dollar increase for cleaning supplies for the buses. With the COVID protocol still in place, we feel it's important to make sure we have those extra supplies on hand. These are just some of our happenings in the last year and a half, two years. As you can see, we have a very generous community. We threw out the idea of blanketing a senior, and we collected over a hundred blankets and are still dispersing them today. We've had Senator Anwar and Jason at a number of our socials, and they got right into work with the seniors. They love when people come to visit, so I invite you to come at any time to come and visit with us. The seniors just like to talk, and if you can lend any, they're very happy to do that. And that's the Senior Center. I don't know, Jason, do you want me to just keep going through all of them or stop in between them?
Well, in the interest of you being, you know, the community service department with with three divisions underneath you, I think let's do the department, and then we'll break down into questions, maybe on a division-by-division basis.
Okay. So my next one would be social services. And I can't see everybody, so I'm not sure if everyone has the page. So I don't know if I should give a minute.
You're good.
Okay, thanks. I'm used to doing these in person. So activities and functions and responsibilities that we are tasked with here at Social Services is to provide assistance to all members of the community who seek it. And that's the big key for us, is we put our programs out there and kind of have to wait until people come to seek help. For whatever reason, they may be having, going through a hard time in their life or need to have a referral for something or refer family members to us, but we're always here for when they, when they need us. So we just like to make sure that everyone understands that we are here, we are willing to help. And if we don't know the answer to something, we try to connect you to the resources that you need. Our biggest programs that we are responsible for are working with CRT again on energy assistance, which is our home heating oil and electric program. These are just some breakdowns of the last couple of years that we've done the program and the dollar amounts that we've helped process applications is amazing. The staff here work hard to be diligent to make sure the applications are complete and submitted in a timely fashion, and they follow up with CRT to make sure they are completed and that the home heating solution is delivered on time with hopefully limited issues. So as you can see, last year, we did about three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars worth of assistance. And this year, we're tracking to be about three hundred and fifty total applications. So that number will grow. I think that's duly attributed to the fact that there's no asset test this year for energy assistance. So bank account information is not required. Energy assistance is still running, so if you know of anyone in need, send them our way. The other big program that we administer with OPM is Renters Rebate. And this program will be coming up for us in April. And again, numbers that we've been able to help administer the last few years, again, huge numbers. These numbers really tend to stay the same, with the exception of unfortunately, if someone passes away or if they move to another community, we send their information with them so that they can do their renters rebate application in another community. So we are gearing up. We don't have the income guidelines for this year just yet, but we are gearing up to get ready to go back into renter rebate. Some other programs that we help to connect people with are nutritional assistance, whether that's mobile food chair, the food pantry with a five-corner cupboard, food vouchers through the farmer's market coupon program, or our power pack program. We also work with a number of community organizations, such as the East Windsor Police Union, to do the stuff a cruiser event. We worked with Cornerstone Community Cathedral for a backpack drive. We've done a number of different community events where people do donations to us. These ladies that are featured made hundreds of masks for us at the height of the pandemic and donated them to us. And we also do SNAP outreach and, again, Medicare assistance as well. Some of our accomplishments this past year, we were able to process one hundred and fifty-two applications for the usage of the five-corner cupboard. I will tell you that their numbers were down during the pandemic. We're gonna attribute that to the SNAP increase that everyone got. Everyone seemed to get the highest amount of SNAP dollars that you could and are continuing to get that even as of today with the governor's executive order and his powers being extended. The SNAP benefits will also be extended. We found out this afternoon. In addition to our everyday responsibilities, we set out to assist with our community fighting against COVID-19. So we partnered with Priority Urgent Care and North Central Health District to facilitate testing and vaccine administration. I will admit that this process was daunting at times. And after the first clinic, we were a little overwhelmed, but we took it on and I think faced it head-on. And we couldn't have done it without the team that we had from our emergency response people to our, just our town staff. Everybody pitched in where they needed to, and we were able to administer one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight first doses and one thousand two hundred and eleven second doses of our vaccines. I think that's pretty good for never having to do this before. We also tried to help with food insecurities during the pandemic. People being hesitant to go to the grocery store and really out in public, but doing a drive-through model. Thanks to the efforts of the gentlemen and the ladies that are pictured in this picture, we were able to donate or get donations of farmers-to-food boxes through the USDA in the Hunger, Connecticut. And we're able to distribute over a thousand boxes of food with our partners at Southern Auto, allowing us to use their parking lot. So many thanks to DPW for really spearheading the work of that and just jumping right in and being willing to help us. These are some of our COVID response efforts and photos. Again, we did the farmers-to-food boxes. We actually had a visit from the governor and his staff. And at our vaccine clinics, we had the honor of having a hundred-and-one-year-old resident come to us on her birthday to receive her second dose of vaccine. So and you can also see that our first selectman also got his vaccine at our clinic. So it was a pretty good. It was a pretty good response, I think. Again, team effort. We couldn't have done it with the people, without the people pictured in all of these photos and so many more. The people are now sending me pictures that I didn't know existed, but they're, they're great. And it's been a very heartwarming experience for me personally to be a part of this. Some of our data that we're working on here down at Social Services is kind of interesting. You will see some of the programs that grow based on the economy and some of them that kind of go down based on the programs and services that are available. So we did see a decrease in backpacks and power packs during the pandemic because schools were closed. So we are anticipating that these funding sources that became available during the pandemic are going to be disappearing. And we're already seeing that on the housing side of things, as unfortunately, I am now back to doing evictions. And I believe those numbers will increase significantly in the coming months or year or so. Some of our goals for next year, community outreach, just to make sure that everyone knows that we are here, we are willing to help. It's confidential, and it is a safe place for people to come. We're again going to continue to process the energy assistance and make sure that our most vulnerable clients don't go without heat, electricity, or water, which are the major components that we need to focus on. And then consistent connections to mental health and substance abuse resources. We are seeing a large increase in mental health referrals, as well as clients coming in in crisis. But thank you to all of our resources that we deal with and reach out to that have helped us with both de-escalation training and just how to make that immediate connection, their warm handoff when we need it. Again, our budget request for 2223, we removed the travel because we do have access to town vehicles. The salary did not increase for the two full-time people that are here because they are out of contract as of July 1st. Again, the two percent increase for the one part-time person that we do have in a family filled. And we have one employee that receives longevity.
Just as a point of clarity there, the clerical employees are out of contract from July 1, 21.
Yeah, sorry, did I, yeah, seven one twenty-one. This is, again, just some snapshots of our generous community. Anytime we put anything out on Facebook or on Jason's calls that he does, the community responds. In our calls that we did for turkeys and gift cards, we had over three hundred gift cards donated multiple times. Checks in excess of a thousand dollars just dropped off with no questions asked. Other residents doing turkey drive, turkey and ham drives for us. As you can see in these pictures, the Girl Scouts, local businesses, the Warehouse Point Fire Auxiliary did Easter baskets for us this year, and I've already are planning to do them again this year. And then the most successful shop with a cop event that we've ever had this year was just so much fun, and I'm looking forward to doing that again next year, hopefully. So these are, again, just some snapshots of our generous community. But as others have said, this is a great place to work and live because everyone supports each other. And that's social services. And finally, Parks and Recreation. The responsibilities in that division is to administer programs and events, facilitate the use of town parks and fields, secure grant funding and means of support to upgrade those parks, programs, and facilities, work in conjunction with the other departments and agencies. And we serve as liaison to a number of different organizations. I also sit on the KERMA Risk Management Advisory Board and bring any of ideas back from KERMA to the town. Some of the accomplishments, again, we had to think outside the box to make sure that we are staying relevant and able to still participate safely with our residents. So we did a number of drive-throughs, just like the Senior Center. We did camp in a box. We started a new outdoor running program with Healthy Kids, which is a national organization. We did the completion of our splash pad at East Windsor Park, the band shell, the ADA bathrooms at Abbey Road Soccer Field. Again, that's all in conjunction with EPW, who we are so grateful to for helping us navigate the construction world. We couldn't have done it without them. Provided weekly activities in socially-distanced manner, did a number of Zoom activities. We shifted our Halloween event to a drive-through event, which we ended up keeping this year. And it was even more well-attended over this year than last. And last year, we organized a community Valentine program, which we got four hundred and fifty Valentines. And as of yesterday, when we handed out the rest of them, we had five hundred and forty-eight of them from this year's Valentine's effort. So we dropped off a number of them to different places in East Windsor. Goals and priorities for this coming year, continue to engage the community, always being ready to navigate the COVID-19 challenges. We're hoping to get back to a little bit of normalcy and hopefully that summer camp, bringing back some lessons and being able to just interact with each other again on a little bit of a normal basis. Continue to partner with organizations and businesses and showing that it's a great place to live, work, and play. And the completion of our master plan for our department, which encompasses our current parks and amenities. That's just a snapshot of what we've been doing with our master plan. So we've had two community meetings so far, and those are two of the seven park snapshots that Beta has done for us of what potentially could look like. Obviously, there's no dollar amounts really associated with the recommendations at this time, but it allows us to have the ability to apply for grants as shovel-ready projects because we have planning done. The next step is to have dollar amounts posted to them by Beta so we can kind of see what we're looking at in order to accomplish those projects. We'll have another community meeting as well coming up soon. This budget request is a little larger. It is larger because this department is a placeholder for the administrator's salary. So you'll see that the administrator's salary is an increase of one point seven five pending the evaluation, which was added to the supervisor's contract. Again, the permanent full-time person's contract is expired as of seven one twenty-one. So that increase is left at a zero at this time. The permanent part-time salaries was increased to two percent, just like the other two divisions. And then we are still in the another minimum wage increase, which is a state mandate, and will be going up to fifteen dollars an hour next year. So this year, it'll be going to fourteen. Professional Services, we are asking for an increase of eight thousand dollars in order to host nine summer concerts. We did implement those last year, and they were very successfully attended. We were averaging between two fifty and three hundred people every time and are getting a number of requests for bands to come to play. The word is out that we have a great facility, a great venue, and they are well-attended. So we are actually going Thursday to an entertainment showcase to audition a number of bands for this upcoming year. First-site improvement, we're asking for a five thousand dollar increase to purchase topsoil to level the ground here at the annex for the ice rink that we currently have and to replace the diving board at East Windsor Park that is well past its years of usage. Well past its years of usage. Um, again, we removed the travel line uh because we have access to town vehicles. And supplies, we're looking for a thirty-eight hundred dollar increase or thirty-eight hundred and forty-three dollar increase. To purchase a water rescue board, water mannequin for training. And we would like to bring the CPR and AED uh training in-house instead of us having to contract out with a another vendor. We would like to uh send our uh program lead to take the trainer certification, which is in the dues and fees line you'll see next. Um, so we would need a training kit to go with that. We could then offer that training CPR, first aid and AED training to all town staff. Um, as well as offering those classes as the community um outreach, which uh you are able to charge for those classes. So it would be a revenue generator for the town. And again, the three hundred and fifty dollar increase in dues and fees associated with that um certification. Uh, so just a little bit of a budget uh history. Um, I started in two thousand and five uh as the first full-time director. And um, we've had some budget increases and decreases and restructuring. Um, so as you can see in the in the chart. The ups and downs are really all attributed to salary. Um, and minimal increases in supplies um over the years. Um, currently, we operate pretty much seven, seven parks on less than sixty-five thousand dollars. Most of them, most of the money goes towards uh salary. Uh, so we, in the last uh, there were two thousand and eighteen, we implemented MyRec, which is our registration software system. And uh, we did a three-year look back um recently and uh just found that we were in a great place in two thousand and nineteen prior to the pandemic. And I think if the pandemic hadn't occurred, we would have um outpaced that number. Um, we're starting to see growth again back with registrations coming in. Um, but uh people are registering online and using the system, which is why um we're looking to sell our season passes online this year. Uh, or in the office so that people can use their credit card. Um, I, as I know myself, I don't really carry cash anymore. And um, using your credit or debit card is really been a great asset in addition to our um department. Excuse me, we uh heard from the community that they wanted to see the amenities that we are able to offer in kind of a snapshot of what the parks look like. So um, my program lead uh did these amazing um posters up for us. And it just describes each location, the amenities that are there, a bright color for photo that snapshots the um facility. And uh, these are posted in our office in the hallway as well, and they are on our website. Uh, so um, we wanted to get these also to the first selectman's office so they can include them in their uh welcome to East Windsor packet. Um, so we will be doing that in the next few days as these are just been completed.
These look great in the Five Village Voice, too.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so I did touch upon the fact that we did complete the installation of ADP bathrooms at Abbey Road and the splash pad at East Windsor Park. Without the voters of East Windsor and many town departments, we would not be able to have these projects completed. So again, many thanks to everyone that helped um make these a reality for us. Um, they've been great additions to both facilities. Uh, we also did the band show, as I alluded to earlier, and this is just a snapshot of. The ribbon cutting that we did um last year. We're all about pictures and and things down here, making sure that we capture the moments and capture the smiles. Um, so these are just some photos of things that we've been able to accomplish. Over the last couple of years. Always armed with our cameras, so it works out pretty good to be able to capture snapshots and memories for everybody. Uh, July is Parks and Recreation Month, and August, we host National Night Out in conjunction with the East Windsor Police Department. So uh, we would just like to remind you to save the date for August second, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, last year, we hosted a community fair at the same time for community organizations to come and display themselves. And uh, it was really well-attended and uh by both vendors and the public. Um, so uh, again, just saving the date for that and hoping that people will come back out and support us. Um, and having a local band play that night, Just Janie, I think, brought that much more special of a special event to the community. That's it.
All right, great job, Melissa. I think it probably makes sense to turn to the members of the board and see. Um, why don't we ask questions pertaining to departments in the order in which she laid them out? Uh, so does anybody have any questions on her budget proposal for Senior Services?
Do you want me to stop sharing my screen?
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful. I can't see who's around. Anybody have any questions or comments on Senior Services? Marie?
Yeah, I just want to um thank Melissa and her team for all the efforts on things they have done throughout this pandemic because um they really. Did more far and beyond um any expectations that I would have had for that group. So I just publicly want to say thank you for everything you've done personally and everything that your team has done and the rest of the town employees. Uh, and I don't know how you get it all done without asking for anything extra year after year, so kudos to you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to Senior Services? I'm gonna move along. Um, how about Social Services?
Just gonna say I don't have any questions on any of the departments, and I I'm impressed with the amount of work that you do, Melissa, and I don't know how you keep it all together. Just a great job.
Thank you.
And on Parks and Recreation? Then Charlie, then Marie.
Um, I just wanted to begin by saying thank you, Melissa. You did an excellent job, very detailed with a lot of data and um. And thank you for all that you do, um, a lot of the departments that you run, you know, it's you're very impactful and meaningful to a lot of people in our community, so thank you. Um, but on Parks and Recreation, I do have a few questions. Um, one on the um training, the in-house versus um contracting out. Do you know any of the cost differences in that? And then um potential revenue that could be brought in from doing it in-house?
Uh, so. No, it didn't cost us anything to to do it with the exception of uh town staff that we certify, so it's three hundred. It's usually about three hundred dollars for us to certify each department. Um, so that's nine hundred dollars between the three. With the um expectation of revenue, I mean, it depends on how many times a year we offer the class. Uh, because really, the only uh thing that the user has to pay for is the certificate. Um, and we're finding that most um. Or the card, I should, I should say, the certificate, the card that you're um given. Um, but we're finding that most classes run about forty-five dollars a person. Um, with the card costing ten of the forty-five, so it's a thirty-five dollar nonprofit.
Thank you, I'm just.
I'm sorry, sir, to build on that, the upside of doing a train-the-trainer model is that we're training somebody one time that we get to keep, and as long as her certification is valid. She can then pay that forward to, you know, additional town staff, state uh town agencies or or members of the general public. So it's basically just making sure we have the personnel in place to provide the service.
We also added AEDs to all the town buildings, so uh we feel that it's very important to have town staff that know how to operate that.
Thank you, and then um just one other question, do you have any numbers on um? Like this past fiscal year versus the prior year on how many people it um came to the park or any revenue numbers?
Sure, um, so. Uh, last year in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, we welcomed four thousand five hundred and forty-eight uh people to the park uh during our operating hours. Um, which brought in a low um about eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, we sold thirty-six season passes with brought, which brought in nineteen hundred dollars. Unfortunately, we didn't have swim lessons last year, but the previous uh year of us having swim lessons, we brought in forty-eight hundred dollars. So we're anticipating being able to match that again this year with the addition of those being added in. And uh, we had um. Six thousand seventy-five dollars worth of pavilion rental income coming in, so our total overall income was twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. For East Windsor Park.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Charlie, I think you were next.
Okay, yes, um, yeah, again, I'll echo a lot of what Sarah had to say, you know, it's been awesome, the things that you guys have been able to offer despite. Uh, the obstacles, um, but my main question was basically what Sarah had touched about. We, we don't see revenue anywhere within this budget, so it kind of seems like you don't get any. Um, and yet, if you get twenty-eight and a half or twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty, you know, it's not shown here.
So Charlie, we're going to talk about revenues uh globally on Thursday night. That's one of the departments that uh is teed up for our our workshop. And if it spills over into our meeting agenda on Thursday, and that includes um local tax, uh state revenues and user fees. You'd see Melissa's numbers show up there.
I didn't have anything beyond that.
Marie?
Yeah, Melissa, just uh for clarification, um, first, um, on the question that was asked regarding the CPR. How many of? Workers do we have at a park that have to be CPR certified in order to work at the uh reservoir?
We require all staff to be certified.
Right, so how many employees approximately does that, because I think uh Sarah was looking for the offset. Um, how much money out of that are we gonna save if you're paying nine hundred for a trainer? How much are you gonna save?
So the full-time, so the permanent staff uh are the ones that we pay for CPR first aid training out of our budget. Uh, the seasonal staff pays for their own training.
Oh, they do, okay. All right, I, just clarification, okay, the second thing is, um, in the budget book, you added on twenty and twenty-one expenses. And your total, uh, are you, uh, your to, your budget, your total budget was three thirty-four um for the twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, but yet, you're adding twenty-one thousand um this year, and you're only at three thirty-three. What's in the other one? Is that the twenty-five thousand for maintenance that's not in there anymore? Or is this, is a sheet that I have here?
So Marie, her FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget was three eleven eight seventy-nine. That went to uh three thirty-three, five seventy-nine. This in the proposed, so her current year is uh three eleven eight seventy-nine.
Okay, Jake, Jake, go two pages. Two pages to the total other expenses, total proposed twenty-one, twenty-two, it says three thirty-four, six oh three. And that's just before the Historical Preservation Commission.
Um, yeah, so Melissa, you don't have the budget book in front of you, right?
I don't get that.
Okay, so it is the um Excel spreadsheet that you titled Proposed Park and Recreation to twenty-two, twenty-three?
Okay. So.
Eight hundred bucks.
A mafia hundred dollars?
Well, you might not be, I wonder if I did something.
Salary should be two fifty, three ninety-five. And other eighty-four, two oh eight.
Eighty-three, forty.
Yeah, so something didn't port over into the. Into the Excel sheet, because we don't have Munis.
Jason, it's not important for you to do that tonight. But I'm just putting it out there, they don't match.
Oh, I found it. So Melissa, you're saying your, your salary should be two fifty, three ninety-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, and in the um. The budget worksheet doc, the one that's on the shared drive, it's a two forty-nine, three seventy, that's the eight hundred dollar difference. Thousand dollar difference. That was a correction that Amy and I made. And I had to do, Amy, uh, help me out, was that had to do with the calculations of part-time staff?
Uh, yes, they um, we did the amount per hour times the number of hours and came up with the amounts for everybody for their uh part-time and full-time salaries.
Probably be a good time to just interject, what is in your, the tabs in your books? Um, that represents mostly um the information that was provided or requested by department heads. Um, if you look at what I submitted to the town clerk's office or what's on the um. The, the town website, you'll see my budget submission, which is, we'll be actually workshopping off of two weeks from uh. Two weeks from Thursday, so what we're going through and what department heads are talking about is what their requests are. And then when we get to our, our meeting on the third, we'll be comparing and contrasting uh my recommendation to the department head requests to the, the board's uh decisions. Just, I should, I should have led with that, but that might.
Okay.
Questions moving forward.
That's all I have.
Do I need to submit a different?
No, you're fine, you don't need to. Melissa, thank you very much for all your great work.
You're welcome, again, I can't, I can't take um all the credit, I have an amazing team that goes above and beyond to support the town, so they uh. They deserve credit where it's due.
They do, but you built your team.
Yep. Thank you.
Speaking of teams, this is a good opportunity to turn to the dynamic duo at Public Works, Lenny and Joe. Um, they're gonna be doing their five budgets, so um I'm not sure which ones they want to lead with, but um, gentlemen, the fourth first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So. I was just gonna go in the order of the numbers. Which the first one is Public Works. One, zero, zero, five, four, three, oh, three is the way I have it. And in the interest of time, since I have six or seven of these to talk about, I'm not going to go through the activities and accomplishments and goals and priorities. You can read that. That's all right there. And honestly, I don't think I need to go through every line of the budget as far as, you know, salary and all that. Again, you can read that. However, I'm not sure on the set full-time salary line, the number should be nine forty-two, two twenty-one. Instead of nine fifty-one, one thirty-four.
Do that number again.
Nine forty-two, two twenty-one. And supplies and equipment should be an even ten thousand dollars, not ten thousand five hundred. And that's reflected down below under supplies and equipment under shoe allowance somehow. When I initially did it, I had an extra pair of shoes in there or boots for the guys. So basically everything under department expenses is basically zero. And the increase under personnel is like nine thousand dollars less than what, what, what is showing there. So that, that's the public works part of the budget, if there's any questions. It's broken up down below with the professional services, supplies and education down below. If there's any questions.
So I'm going to just flag something for the, the group's consideration. That's true of Melissa's budgets and of Len's budgets. And, and actually across, across the board, not just those two. But our part-time, we have, we have something called salary compression happening with the, the hourly rate that we provide to part-time employees. They're going to be paid eighteen, eleven, I think, in this new budget, assuming a two percent. And what you're seeing is that it is, the minimum wage is creeping right up to our part-time rates. So there's a little bit of salary compression that's happening there. And the other issue I wanted to flag while we're on that topic is the rate at which we, we pay our recording secretaries hasn't anywhere in, in town government, hasn't really been addressed in like twenty years. So we are significantly below market on on those rates. I just wanted to, to flag that, because when, well, the part-time salary is broken out in the budget, so I just wanted to flag it while I was thinking of it. And we have any questions or comments about DPW?
Yeah, I do. In the goals and priorities section, I think it also is kind of I guess it's just goals and priorities. There's a lot of talk about the, all the sidewalks that were done in warehouse, I mean, in, in Broadbrook and with goals to do more of them in Broadbrook. And I remember last year, we had discussed and agreed to repair sidewalk in Warehouse Point, specifically the section of sidewalk where it turns from concrete to blacktop on, on South Main Street. And, you know, there was going to be a delay in getting it done because the state had done work on the road, but then it was supposed to get done after that, and I didn't see that that got done. And I don't see any Warehouse Point sidewalk being listed as, you know, a goal or a priority for this coming year. I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Sure. That was an oversight, actually, as far as not being listed on my goals and priorities. The, the DOT spent the better part of the, the summer working on, on Main Street, if you will, Route five-ten, between repairing catch basins, then they milled it. They overlaid it. They were working there a lot this past year, so we really didn't, number one, we really didn't have an opportunity where we wouldn't be butting heads with them. Number two, as far as getting a contractor to do the work, we, we had a hell of a time this year just trying to get Tromley Road done, the drainage and paving we did there. And I have some interesting numbers here that we had a pretty wet summer. We fought like crazy trying to get Tromley Road even paved. Contractors were behind, I, I mean, even trying to do that. So trying to get somebody to do sidewalks, you know, around and about where the DOT was working, we felt it'd be better off to just put it off until this coming summer. And I, and I apologize, I neglected to put that on my goals and priorities, but there was actually almost twenty-two inches of rain this past summer from June one to August thirty-one. And out of that three-month period, fifty-two days had some type of precipitation. It's, it was a beast. We will be working to get those sidewalks completed or repaired this construction season. And for clarification, the only sidewalks we did in Broadbrook was the little bench we put down across from Highland Avenue. The only concrete work that got done this year.
Yeah, I understand that the weather was difficult for construction. It was excellent for the honey crop, but it was different.
The other problem we have too is with our size of our crew, we have two guys sweeping, it takes three months. We have two guys cleaning catch basins that takes all summer long. We have three guys maintaining the parks and mowing. That leaves us one highway maintainer. So it's, it's quite a juggling act, especially with the weather. And like Len said, we, we probably hauled into this yard a little over ten thousand yards of sand and gravel that literally was washing out of the hills this year on East Road and on Rockville Road, and we had, we had a sinkhole big enough to probably put all our dump trucks in on Melrose Road. So we, we battled to keep our heads afloat this year.
No, understood. I remember all those, all those incidents and, you know, heard a lot about it on Facebook too. Yeah, I'm sure you do. But this contracted work anyway. I mean, you guys aren't pouring concrete, right? I mean, you'd have somebody come in and do that work.
Yes, we would have a contractor come in and do the sidewalks. I mean, if we have a little spot to repair, but we're, we're talking some serious sidewalks here, so we're gonna have to have someone come in, put the forms up, you know, dig out the blacktop, put the forms up and, you know, pour the, pour the concrete.
Okay, thanks.
We will do it this summer.
I'll be watching for it.
Let's aim for spring.
Make sure you weigh.
That's all I got.
Anything else on DPW? Marie?
Yeah, you got our Tromley Road as an accomplishment. I'm sure you're aware, there's been a lot of comments on Tromley Road over the last week or so. But I drove through it after I saw some of the comments. Is there going to be another layer put on that road?
No, that road is done. So I will let you know what's happened over there. So again, with all the rain and everything, gutters got built up in the topsoil to hold the water back from shedding across the road. And we need to go back and grade. And all of those yards that go around that sharp corner and up, all of their yards, and they have pipes, they push all the water from the back, because it all comes out of the field trials. They push it all to the front, and there's nothing in their yards to catch it. So it either has to hit the catch basin, or what's happening, it's going over the catch basin and onto the road. Because they have, they have pipes, they have footing drains, they have some pumps. So with the one particular spot this year, we're going to have to get an easement from the gentleman, put about a twelve-foot piece of pipe in and a catch basin in his yard to catch most of that water. And then regrade, we need to do some regrading and touch up on the curbs, on the curb line. So we're fully aware of how to fix the problem, but in all fairness to the Facebook people, it is one thousand percent better than it has been in the past, because we would have to sit and we would salt and sand that road every single day through the whole winter because of all the water that was there. So one spot's better than the whole road.
But the, and the reason why I asked is because when I drove after those comments on, there's a couple of the new storm drains that were put in seemed to have receded down below the M site. And I don't know if that's, I don't know if that was intentional or not.
No, it's just, it's just frost moving things around. It'll come back up.
It'll come back up. Okay. All right, thanks, guys.
Other questions or comments on the, on the public budget?
Okay, next is Town Property, one zero zero five four three zero four. Again, there's activities, accomplishments, goals and priorities. Basically, what you see is, is based upon increases in the cost of doing business. And I will start with, let, let's go to where it says water and hydrants. I, I still don't have an official, the official letter is going to go to the first selectment when it's super official, I guess, but I got out of my contact at the water company, that there's going to be a basically a three-quarter percent, point seven-six percent increase on July twenty-two and a one-point-eight-six percent increase January twenty-twenty-three. So the numbers under the fiscal year, twenty-three request for water, my calculation is that it would now be twelve thousand five hundred and nine dollars.
Say, say that number again.
Twelve thousand five hundred and nine dollars. And hydrants will now be four hundred and two thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Four oh two eight ninety-nine?
Four oh two eight ninety-nine. Yes, that, that, that's what I came up with. Hopefully they'll give us a real number. But that's for now anyhow, what we have to work with.
The January twenty-twenty-three, you said was one point what?
January twenty-twenty-three will be one-point-eight-six percent increase, according to the gentleman that sent me the email.
Okay, thank you.
And then you can see that our oil slash heat went up and the gas and diesel went up. Basically, the oil and the heat is, the increase there is, there's a seven percent increase in natural gas that we're dealing with. And our fuel is now three dollars a gallon. Or we're assuming it's going to be that for the next year. It's going to fluctuate. It'll be a little less than that, it'll be a little more than that, but it's, it's in the three-dollar a gallon range. So that is that.
On, on fuel, one of the things that they're talking about is the suspension of the federal gas tax, which would equate to like twenty cents a gallon. Does, do we pay that tax? Do we pay, or, or do we get tax exempt for?
We're, we're tax exempt on all road taxes and federal taxes on gasoline.
Okay, so, so that comes off the bill.
Yes, and heating oil is taxed also exempt. Yeah, well, the other increase is electrical.
Yeah. Yeah.
Heating oil right now, we just paid for heating oil, costs us three dollars and fifty cents a gallon.
Any questions or comments on town property? Sarah?
The project renovation, ten thousand dollar request, what would that be for?
That was something that was requested by the, that was something that was requested by the tax collector to install a bulletproof wall in the tax collector's office. I cut that.
Thank you.
Not in my recommendation.
Hey, just remember, the first selectman cut it, not Joe.
He'll get credit for it, though. Sorry, Joe.
Well, I guess on the grand scheme of things, the, the tax collector's been collecting taxes there since nineteen fifty-nine. And we've never once had an incident. So we've got a good record. I think we're fine. I agree with Jason. I think we're fine. Okay, no questions? Any more questions? Oh, yes.
Just, just looking for a quick update while it's convenient. I know the last time we talked, and it was, you know, some time ago now, though, that most of the dog pound fixes had been done inside, and at the time, we were, the, the price of aluminum had gone, aluminum had gone really kind of out of this world, and so we were waiting to redo the fencing until that price got a little bit more reasonable. I imagine that that's not happening, nor will it be likely to happen in the near future. Could you just give us kind of an update, you know, how you look to finish up the, I guess, I think it's just primarily the outdoor stuff?
Well, funny you should ask, because the price of the steel has not gone down. As a matter of fact, we're in a listserv with other towns with facilities and public works and
Two hundred and ten.
Joe had, okay, the steel has gone up two hundred and ten percent. Since August of two thousand. So we probably won't be doing the outside in the near future. However, we have been honestly trying to work with the ACO, or the ACOs, I guess, there's two of them. We've been trying to make accommodations inside to, we painted the inside, we did some new lighting, we got a new floor mat kind of thing down for them to wash things down. We're trying, we're, we're doing the best we can with the money we have with things that haven't like gone crazy out of control. So we have, you know, we have gotten some emails from the ACOs, and we've had, I had a meeting with one of them myself, actually. And I think they're somewhat pleased with what we're doing. I, I know they like to have it all done, but I, I think they understand that it's a function of the almighty dollar. You know? So in our violation, we got that stemmed all this is, one of it was seal all the cracks and epoxy coat the interior, which we did. We put in LED lighting throughout the whole building, actually lighting in each stall versus having just a couple tube lights running down the middle. New oil tank was installed this year, a thermostat was installed this year. And we're, we're just waiting to get the fencing done. I reached out to him the last week and he was looking into it, and I haven't heard back, but I'm afraid he's going to come back at me with a substantial price increase again.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I remember too. And when I went and took a look at it last year, when the topic came up, I mean, you would, it looked good in there, and, and a lot of that work that you listed had been done. So I was just kind of curious about the outside, because I know that was outstanding and you know, I know we have the money that we originally budgeted, but it's likely to overrun that long-term, I think, due to the materials. I, I don't think they'll be coming down, period, but we'll see, I guess. We'll see, I guess.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
The building one.
Yes.
Anybody else?
The humane parts of the job are complete and that's what was really important, but you know, we obviously want to finish it, but. I think that there's more important things got done.
Len, what's next?
Next road improvements. One zero zero five four three zero six. Grill sergeant, the way I'm shouting now, sorry. Um, well, my request. Was, uh, one fifty salt and sand and three hundred road maintenance. Um. I believe the first election took some of the. Salt and sand, if I look on my little sheet here.
You are correct.
It's down to one thirty now. Just so you know. I have so far this year purchased fifteen hundred tons. Rock salt. To the tune of approximately sixty dollars. A ton. Which is like ninety thousand dollars today just for the rock salt. And. Pretty much equal amounts of, uh. Sand to mix with the rock salt.
At fifteen dollars.
It, that, that we pay by the cubic yard and that's fif- fifteen dollars a cubic yard and honestly. The, the rock salt went up, I think. Five or six dollars a ton this year. And the darn sand went up like.
Three dollars.
Three, four dollars a, a cubic yard this year. It's like even sand. It comes out of the hill. It still goes up. It's, it's, it's crazy. But.
What, what you're showing in Munis as of today is only, uh, a little shy of sixty thousand dollars extended, expended with ninety thousand to go.
Well, that's because the last. The last five hundred tons just finished arriving here yesterday. So we will get billed for that probably next week. That'll be another thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And we haven't received the bill for the sand yet. And quite honestly, if we don't order another five hundred. We'll start in a deficit next year. So another five hundred probably be, or whatever we can afford, we will buy. Cause we try to fill our sand salt shed up so we don't start a deficit every year. It never gets cheaper. But that's pretty straightforward and that's where we are.
Anybody got anything?
Okay. Next is the building committee. Um. I honestly. Don't think I could tell you when the last time was we had a building committee meeting. However. I think it's prudent to keep something in there for a recording secretary because. Guaranteed, as soon as you take it out of the budget, something will come up and we'll need to have some meetings. And it's only in my budget because I'm a. Like an ex officio member of the building committee and kind of oversee. That's another one of my hats. That's pretty straightforward.
About garbage?
Garbage? Oh, that's not till last. You want me to go to sanitation? Okay.
Oh, is that, uh, I'm sorry. It's the next one in the tab. Why don't we finish the tab and then we'll, we'll jump to, um.
Okay, sure, absolutely. Cause Joe's going to do IT anyhow. I'm getting hoarse. And he likes to talk. He's a, he's a, he's a, he's a good talker.
You want me to do sanitation?
It's pretty simple. It's pretty easy. So.
As long as I don't have to present it to Geraldine.
That's, that's actually the one person you're going to have to present it to. So sanitation is, uh. It's, it's a combination of things. It's collection. It's, uh, you know, mixed. Waste disposal and then the, the single stream recycling. Um. It's. We're going to go from approximately ninety dollars a ton. To a ninety-three dollars a ton. And. I don't remember who did it. I think it was Denise Minard when she was first selectman. Um. Made the decision. With input to lead Mira. Um. They are in the range of a hundred and nineteen dollars a ton to a hundred and twenty-six dollars a ton. And, and there's talk that it's going to get a lot worse than that because they just don't know what to do with it. So we are, is, is bad as the number may look to some. We're really in a very good spot when it comes to, uh. Our, our sanitation line. Um, the single stream recycling could act, I kept it the same as it was last year. Um, indications are that. The way things are going in the recycling world. Um, that could end up being eight or ten thousand dollars less, um, during the course of next year. But I'd rather. Put in the same number and end up giving some back than end up having to come ask for more money. Um. And. You may notice in the past, we've asked for a, a household hazardous waste collection day. And we were a- actually able to have enough money in the budget this year. We're going to have one next month.
We did an added appropriation for that.
That we, oh, that's right. We came and asked for money for that, right? So, uh. That'll, that we took out. And that'll, we, you have the date, Joe? March fifth, March fifth. Well, get all your chemicals together or. Bring them by.
I'm pouring it all into a fifty-five gallon drum all year. I'm just waiting. I'm going to drop that off for you.
Oh, great.
I was actually wondering if I could just come down a day early and dump it in the stream behind the garage.
That's not, no, no, that's not good. We're already being accused of polluting wells. We don't need oil pumpings.
Bad joke.
Really bad. It's usually something Joe says.
Well, I'm in the comfort of my own home. Um. All right. Any questions or comments on sanitation? I, I do want to echo Len's point about what a home run it is not to be part of Mira. As I, as I talk to municipal leaders in the CROG, uh, organization or CCM. Um, or pretty much any other statewide organization, this is like the front and center issue for municipalities across Connecticut is, is trash disposal. And as they talk about the. Incredible budget pressure that is being put on their communities, I kind of kick back and think to myself. We got a pretty good deal. Um, so I, it, it, it has worked out quite well.
This was, uh. Two thousand eleven, this was put into place and I remember it was a lot of complaints about having to have a. The roller bins and all that stuff and all that's gone by the wayside and I'm looking at this increase and no increase is good, but. This is nothing compared to what I'm reading about other towns are going through right now. The last year or two is just getting, we're getting killed.
Yeah.
I, I'm getting calls from other public works directors wanting to know. How we have such a good deal and quite honestly. It's the better way to go. Even for them, but we have such a good deal because we got into it so long ago that we were locked in. Um, early enough, um, and of course, you know, USA and all American waste are right here in our town. So, uh, they do us very well. They take care of us. That's all I got.
Anything else on sanitation? We're going to flip to tab three. Uh, I'm sorry, tab two. It's just after activities and fees. After activities and fees, but before the.
What the heading are we looking for?
Information technology. Uh, it's one oh oh five four one four three.
You all good?
Maria's still looking.
Yeah, I'll find it. Go ahead. Don't hold up.
Take it away, Joe.
Thanks, Len.
Well, um, as you all can see, to start off our professional services, which is our consultant. We've kept the cost flat. We're, uh. We're doing very well in-house. Taking care of most of the problems. Uh, they're also. With, with the modern technology now, we're also doing a lot of stuff remotely, so we're not wasting time having them come down. We're, we're really able to pull out more stuff in-house. Our purchase service lines gone up a little. You know, most of it's just the software. There's nothing special in there. It's just. It's, you know, it's just cost of the software. There's nothing we can do about it. It's. Basically, if our purchase services is. You know, basically all of our protection, all of. What we do, the, the systems we work on, how we protect ourselves from the outside world. And we retain, you know, our retention base where all our records go in the cloud. We have to pay for them to be stored. Our cable, uh, we discovered in the last couple months, uh. Communication's been really dragging in some of the. Buildings because of the cable and. What we've discovered is our bandwidth was so small because. We didn't, we didn't have the. We're using the equipment we're using now. We're up full of staff, you know, every building's. Got full staff. We're running voice over IP phones. The printers are working. So we're. We basically upped our bandwidth, so that's why our cable cost went up. We had to up our bandwidth in three of the, three out of the four buildings. Equipment. Uh. I harp on everybody every year about this, uh, you know, we need to keep our infrastructure, our computer system and. Obviously y'all gave us the server money. And our servers are upgraded. We're just finishing up with the software upgrades on them now. Uh, but. Equipment wise with, with the newer. With the newer programs and everything we're changing over to in different offices. We're discovering that the nineteen inch screens that we have that we purchased in probably. Uh, maybe somewhere around two thousand, two thousand two. Aren't big enough anymore and it's hard to see the whole program. Spread seats don't show out, uh, the assessors program. So. Partly that's where the equipment is. The police need to put a request in for about five thousand dollars worth of monitors and stuff, so. That's why I'm asking for fifteen thousand this year. To be honest with you. Um, I, I got ten thousand last year. I've got, uh, I don't know, twenty-seven dollars left in that line and, and I have not purchased any. New computers. It's all been repaired to stuff we've had and the issues that we've had. And then there's the software, software licensing. We had a slight increase in that too. Due to, uh. Uh. The assessor software, the price went up a little bit, um. Then, you know. Trying to think what else went up. Outlook went up, but again, that's, our, our outlook gives us, Microsoft gives us Excel, gives us Teams, gives us everything. It licenses are. When I first started doing this, the license cost us a hundred and fifty dollars. They're up to two eighty now. So. It. It's expensive, but. We have the latest versions and we don't have to worry about any upgrades and we don't have to run around and try to upgrade all. I think we probably have about a hundred and between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and thirty. PCs or. PCs in town. So. I would. If there's any questions, I would be more than happy to answer any questions. I could probably beat Ellen to the chase about the cyber audit. Uh, the cyber audit was conducted. We are working, we've got all the fixes in place. The only thing that threw a. Wrench in it is I decided about a month ago to. Update. The server software. So we decided, you know, I decided to do that now and they recommend we don't run the second audit. Until that upgrade's done. We are vulnerable in two spots. But very minimal vul- vulnerability at whatever. Um. So that's where we stand with that. We should. I hope to complete it within. Within the next couple of months. I just want to make sure that we are good and. Tight and. We were, we weren't bad. We, we really, we weren't bad. There's a lot of technical stuff that I'm not going to be able to answer for you. But, um. It. We've got a tight ship and we keep a tight ship. It frustrates people at times. But, you know, it's. It's the way we have to operate right now in this day and age with all the ransomware and people coming into the system. We've got sonic walls. We got rid of wifi in all the buildings, so. We've done some great stuff. But there's a lot more we can do.
It's never done. No, I, I, I do remember seeing, I think I did get a look at the preliminary report and there was nothing like humongous there and of course. They're not finding anything, then they're not doing a good job. So. I think we look good there. You know.
Yeah, they look.
Most of our stuff is newer, you know, and that's, and that helps.
Yeah, and. Uh, you know, I mean, our vulnerabilities, you know, we can talk offline. I don't want to certainly say where we're vulnerable on an open meeting.
We're not vulnerable.
Strong like bull. Any questions?
Yeah, Joey Cox Cable. Is that the, um, cable company? For you guys?
Yep.
Are you, are we experiencing any issues with them? Because it seems to be a lot of residential issues lately.
Oh, my gosh, Maria, if I could, if we could get rid of them, I would get rid of them, but you know what?
They're the only ones.
The game around here. They're, they're terrible. They're currently, they're, they're overwhelmed. They currently actually hit us with some IP changes, which totally, totally messed us up on. State access and everything. We had to go through and change a lot of PCs, but. They're, they're actually. Doing some trunking work and expanding the service in this area, but. It will really not go into effect until midsummer, fall. But unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do because we're victim to them.
Yep.
Anybody else on IT?
Nope.
That's all we have.
Wait till next year. What's next year?
I'll find another budget to give you.
We look forward to it. We're up for the challenge.
All right, we'll give you the shared service budget.
Let me just turn the cameras off.
Maria, that was very funny.
Your terms.
All right, DPW, thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. And now we'll turn to the leadership from the police department. Chief DiMarco, do you want to introduce your team?
Hello, everybody.
How are you?
With us tonight is our commission chairman, Bob Leach, myself and deputy chief Roger Hart.
Go ahead. Presentation is yours. Is it? Are you going to do it or is Chairman Leach?
I think I'm gonna start. Are you going to share my screen?
You you can share your screen.
Share my screen. There we go.
I don't have your presentation.
Yeah, I'll do it. Let's see if I can. Get to work.
You remember when we went with Commissioner Rebel.
Oh, my God, that's what I'm trying to avoid now. Can you see my PowerPoint yet?
Yes, we can.
So I I shared the wrong screen. Is it running now? Is anything happening?
No, we can see the PowerPoint slide, but it's not started yet. So we can still see the application.
Got to start it over then.
Now, oh, here we go.
Now you can see it, right?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. So here we are. We'll do the police department first. We're fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I've introduced everybody who's gonna speak tonight. So we'll jump right into it. We want to discuss since last year what's happening, not only in East Windsor, but in our state and across the country. Violent crime and mental health issues continue to plague many of the cities and towns across this nation. All you have to do. Is turn on the news and you can see violent crime rates are surging. Gun crime is definitely on the rise. And the death of police officers across the country is at an all time high. Collected officials, experts and the research are now recognizing that the pendulum is moving, though. The national narrative about policing is changing. In fact, you just saw. President Biden make a visit to one police plaza, which has never done been done before with a sitting president reaching out to local policing. The reason that the narrative is is switching is because a lot of people are learning that cutting police officers. Reducing programming or staffing or abandoning our streets, i.e. defund the police, is simply not a solution. Um, for accomplishing what you want to get done. And in fact, that's why we're seeing violent crime and gun crime surge across the country. Comparatively, though, East Windsor remains a very safe place to live and work. We're not going to bore you with a bunch of numbers this year. We went over them pretty much in depth. But our community has unique needs. In order for us to keep it safe and respond to the level of calls that it does produce. We have to come together as a team and ensure that we do have proper staffing, that we do have the correct training and programming. And that, in the end, that we have proper funding to meet the demands of our community. So some of the uniqueness is our mental health needs that we talked about in our social services, which our department is attempting to adapt to. One of the accomplishments we want to talk about on the PD side, since we've seen you last, is that we we were accredited on March tenth. Twenty twenty-one, we received excellent grades. Um, and we're now well on our way to tier two accreditation and we're working very hard towards that. So the police department budget, it's a financial operating and public safety plan, and we took a lot of time to produce the plan. In essence, it's the. The money that provides for us to operate and perform those public safety initiatives. It covers seven one twenty-two through six thirty twenty-three. And that's what we're here to present tonight. It embodies our expenditures, estimates for what we think are needed to provide police. Community mental health services, equipment and supplies. And it it does contain all our proposed line items and the deputy chief will be going over everything that we think will need to finance our. Essential services. Two main parts, as you know, it's broken down to the first part of personnel and then the second part of the budget will be expenses. So we're going to spend a minute here because it is important. What we have to do is fully understand the significant and critical relationship between this budget. And last year's budget and the years before that. And I'm talking going back several years to when we initially started with getting the school resource officer. We were able to last year get the mental health team and then this year's budget relies on those those. Successful with those programs, this year's budget also takes into effect those because we're trying to make. The whole project work for all these years. If we don't get budgeting in this year's budget, it's going to impact whether we can maintain that school resource officer. We have detective division issues and we've been really struggling with getting our mental health team because people have retired. Covid has really struck us hard. Um, so we we need you to understand that with the initiatives that we're talking about. We have at-risk community. We have family members that need our help and the detective division, it's our basic ability to investigate crime. There's only one detective in that division right now, and that's for everything, all crime, all background checks, everything that they. The town requests us to do comes out of that one person unit. Little bit about our goals and priorities and accomplishments. Um, I won't kill you with them because we did submit them to you in writing. But one of the most important things that we had was our watch guard deployment and we're fully up and running with our cruiser body cameras. Um, recording, storing, all that kind of stuff. Um, it just, it's, it's really working well. We have been seeking grant opportunities, including a recent. Um, accomplishment. One of the things we wrote down that we wanted to do is get grants for vital equipment such as training and vehicles and. Firearms and things of that nature. We did get forty-two thousand dollars, I I believe it was this week. And we're trying to accomplish our grant endeavors and and we're being quite successful. You'll also see, um, in a few minutes, we're going to get to a slide about our data analytics. Our civilian position's been in effect for over a year and a full year this past year, and you're going to see. The the benefits of what's been occurring with that. We're fully up and running with our automated police officer scheduling, crime analytics dashboard and our communications. With the public. Of that slide. So here, and I won't bore you with it all. But you can go on to our main page, just our police department page. And you can look at our our analytics dashboard, do a live demo for you real quick. You see our webpage? So right down here, if you roll down the top, right down to the middle of the page, you have our data analytics dashboard, interactive analytics dashboard. You'll click on it and then it's going to come up. Everything you want to know about the police department. We are a fully open, communicative and transparent police department. We've had news agencies, other police departments call us and really give us accolades for the the level of information that you can get out of that. If you want to know use of force data information. All that is is a is a click away. It tells you how many use of force incidents we've had. How many, um, persons by race, by everything that you want to know about. So. If you simply go into this section, bring it up into the focus mode, it can, you can start to really drill down. So I would encourage you to go there, look at it, you can look at policies, you can look at traffic analysis. Our daily call log is on here. If you want to know what we've been doing. And if you're really struggling with it, you can pull up our interactive video that we put up. Play this all. We have everything on board online and you can definitely look at everything that we're doing.
What current are your criminology stats?
Today.
So. Well, I I'll have a question for you later on, maybe. I don't.
So here we are fiscal year, um, budget. We're going to go over it. Remember, it's broken down into the two sections. We'll do part one personnel first and then we'll do department expenses second. Right before we get started, we will have full-time twenty-seven officers, full-time administrative support staff. Is ten and our part-time employees is two. That's the two animal control officers. As usual, our budget submittal has full descriptions and details explaining every line item and every expense and you just have to check your budget. Packages to see that. And basically, this is it right here. It's a budget commentary. And below each of it, it explains what each line item is. We're going to give you a line by line breakdown of the budget now. Deputy Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking your time to hear our presentation tonight. Many of you know us and we've been through this many times, so we'll try to keep it short and and simple and right to the point. And then answer any of your questions at the end. Um, our first line that in your packets, the number may be off a little bit. And in your packets verse one versus what we have here is because we had a discussion with. Uh, the town treasurer and the first selectman on this line, the clerical salary line includes two supervisors. And we included the potential for their raises that were associated with performance evaluations. We included them in the original packet submission. So we were told that that should be coming out of contingency line. So for this presentation, we removed, uh, those potential raises and reduce the change to two thousand five fourteen. Which is different from your packet. So these only the clerical salary, the only increases in there basically have to do with the step increases. The officer salary line, um, this increase, um, it has to do with some salary. Step increases, uh, but primarily primarily the number it has to do with funding that twenty-seventh position. Uh, that formerly was not funded, but the person is still on our payroll and that person. Is the officer who's on military leave at this time. Um, he's scheduled to come back to service soon and so we had to include his salary into this equation and that's why you're seeing. Dispatcher salary. They do have raises included in their contractual raises for June. Or I'm sorry, July one, twenty twenty-two, they have a two point two five percent increase in their salary. And the reason why it's five point six four is that be, that's because three dispatchers have step increases. And two of them are major step increases from a starting salary to the first step. And that's a significant increase and one goes from step two to step three, which is less significant, but yet certainly more than a two percent increase. This line admin salary, that's the chief in my contracts and that is our. Two point two four percent increase on the budget line. PD overtime, we kept it flat at zero simply because we seem to be doing well this year at this number. Um, this is a number we've been coming at. I I don't know if Amy has given, uh, sometimes she'll give you a three-year look back. Uh, if she did in fact give you that out, I'm certain you'll see that in the last three years, we were right around that number. So we figured we'd keep it at. Uh, flat at three hundred and fifty-four thousand. And very same with the training salary as well. We kept that at no increases. Longevity, uh, and that's actually that if you have questions about that, you can kind of go to. The part of the packet where we break down that longevity not only is longevity, but also deals with, um, educational incentives. We have a very highly educated workforce here. Um, so that's what's kind of showing the increases there. As people have obtained advanced degrees. And so that's our overall increase for the salary line is a three point three four percent. All of it is somehow related to either step increases, contractual raise increases negotiated. And or employee bargaining unit in increases as well. Next, we're going to get into part two, which is our department expenses or the operational side of what we do. Uh, we really tried to keep this at a very low minimal increases. Our professional service line. Uh, again, we only did a two percent increase. Um, even though we are really struggling with this line. Um, the main reason why we're struggling with the line is some of the state mandates regarding, uh. Mental health examinations for police officers, your analysis for police officers. All that is completely unfunded by the state, but hits this professional service line. So these are all costs that we are trying to. The way we're doing it is we're trying to spread it over a three-year period as people, um, go through their certification process. So we can spread the cost over three years, but it's still a cost that we really didn't have before the police accountability bill. And act. This line is a dog fund. It's kind of a placeholder. Amy pretty much handles this, uh, in the treasurer's office and. Balances it with with the dog fund balance. Uh, so we left it at zero as a placeholder. Zero percent increase rather. Same with our vehicle maintenance line. We seem to be doing pretty well with the vehicle maintenance. Our, uh, fleet seems to be. Holding up pretty well for us. The rotation of replacing the vehicles seems to be working for us. Um, so we have no increase on that line and kept it flat. Same with the travel expense, as you see in our, you know, we did explain it a little bit. We do travel a little bit into Massachusetts. Uh, for investigations, for training, um, and we do have a couple of. Transponders, easy passes, I told. transponders, easy passes, I totally forgot the name, but we'll easy pass transponders and in three of our vehicles that we can move around. So that hits this particular line and at there are some times, doesn't happen very often, but there are some times where we don't have a department vehicle and somebody can in fact put in for training. And it's built into their contracts when they can drive and when they were are supposed to take a town owned vehicle. Supply line, again, we we found ourselves with, you know, COVID supplies, as everybody has mentioned to you that our supply lines seem to be taking a hit, so we did increase it just to 2% moving forward. The this is the equipment line, last year we didn't ask for anything in this particular line. This year we're finding that our our handguns are aging and our armors are coming to us and telling us that there's about 10 to 12 weapons that need to be either replaced or refurbished at a cost of somewhere around $3,000. Well, when this was brought to the chief and I, we said, well, we know that Glock will has an exchange program. So our armors did some research and worked with Glock vendors. And they were able to come up with a proposal where we would exchange our 40 calibers in for nine millimeters and get the newest version of the nine millimeter pistols and replace all of our weapons in the department, department wide, not just 10 to 12 that needed to be replaced, but department wide with brand new weapons and the cost was for the holsters, the ammunition and the weapons is $6,525 that we're requesting in the equipment line.
It sounds like a steal.
It really is.
There really is. How long have we had the guns now, 10 or 12 years?
I think about 12 years, chief, maybe even a little bit longer.
Thanks. Chairman, did you have something to say?
No, no, I just said agreed completely. It's a it's a no brainer really.
So our uniform costs, we had three new officers come on the job this year, which hit our uniform line a little bit stronger than most years. But all in all, we anticipate things remaining pretty much the same, so we kept it flat at the 47, four, five, four. And dues and fees, this line is has to has to deal with a lot of our education. Not only the education for certification of police officers, but we also have about four people going through college right now, some finishing in their bachelor's degree and I think three or four working on their master's degrees. So that has a kind of points back to their collective bargaining agreements where we are have to pay for a certain percentage of their college tuition. So we kept the number at 51,596 with no increase this year.
Is it that's in the dues and fees line deputy?
Yes, it is.
Question last year came up, I don't believe the person's in the room now, but the budget request doesn't represent employee benefits, that's represented in another area of the town budget, so we figured we'd mention again this year, we're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes, that's where it is. When the end, we're asking for a 3.34 overall budget increase to the good work that we did in order to maintain our mental health team and deploy them properly. To maintain our detective division, our school resource officer, we need this money to fund the position. And 27 officers supported by 10 support staff.
So before we go to questions, you guys have a couple of budgets under your purview. Do you want to take questions on the PD budget now and then go to those or do you present on the other budgets and then take questions overall?
However you want to do it.
I think it would be easier to take the questions now that way, because you have the presentation up, we can go back to it if we need to, if that's okay with you.
I'll take that budget down now and then go to the next one.
So on the on the PD budget, you referenced an officer who was returning from military leave, do you have a return date specified?
We have an anticipated date, he's looking at houses now and his time and his trainings coming to a conclusion, we're looking at it somewhere June, July, August, it's really hard to pinpoint it any further than that.
And there is a retirement pending, I found out it has actually been submitted. That would be at the end of this fiscal year, effective at the beginning of the next. Does that, does the returning officer replace the departing officer or is it, are you going to hire another on top of?
Our contention that that you fund this budget as requested so that we can replace that officer, because if we don't, then we're looking at a lack of ability to have supervision, school resource officers, proper detectives and the mental health team with that 27th position, we can guarantee that those, all those entities can run full time without interruption and can serve the community the way it's intended to serve the community. Without it, there's going to be some give and take and that might be the loss of an SRO or or something along that lines.
That's the only question I had, just a matter of dates. Any other questions or comments on the police department budget? Marie.
Hey Chief, um, the last couple of police commission meetings, there's been discussion regarding training for weapons qualification. There's no increase and I know that was done intentional because you want to try to keep the budget and work around what you have and that's very much appreciated, but with the new clocks, is that going to become an issue? Or is there training provided once you purchase those?
You want to start, Deb?
Certainly, the way we what we plan, if we are funded with the equipment line, we would make the purchase Glock is always worked with us quite well. And when we do our annual firearms and trade training, usually in September and October, that's when we would swap the weapons out at training, so it would be just our annual training. And we would work with the weapon is essentially the same weapon, it's just a different caliber.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with them, so.
Other good news is is the chairman of the police commission did some work on his own. And we're now in the research phase, it should be done by the end of this month, where we might have access to firearm range that we would have more availability. So we can maybe send on duty staff while they're on duty and not incurring overtime. And we can actually shoot in a very professionally maintained location. And that's for an incredibly reasonable amount of money that we're going to try to incur elsewhere. So it's kind of all coming together.
All right, I am, and I heard that presentation, so I'm glad you're pursuing that also.
Yeah, right, correct, chief, and if I could just interject for a moment. I had taken well on my own, I guess, I I joined another gun club as usual, but I was able to speak to the general manager and the president of the gun club about having East Windsor PD join as a corporate member. Spoke to them at length and I was able to get some corporate membership at this particular gun club, it's probably one of the premier gun clubs in Connecticut. But what they have there is a is is an amazing facility that can offer our our police department a great place to do training, qualification, etc. It's something that's been needed for years, something that's been neglected for years. And then again, I will add that I would love to see our training line bumped up to what we really need it to be. But in in an effort to keep our budget at a reasonable increase, we're willing to forego that on the commission level anyway. So anyway, we're working towards it any way we can, that's all.
Other questions or comments on the the police department budget? All right, guys, what's next? Chief, you're muted.
Emergency management, if you don't mind, since I have it queued up. So we're going to follow the same process, we're going to go line by line, we're going to break it down to its two parts. Part one being the personnel, part two being department expenses. And we're going to go line by line breakdown for you. And we'll do it in that two part section. First section personnel is agreed upon by all parties that it would remain stagnant. And it is a 0% increase that does cover everybody from the director of emergency management to the deputy director of emergency management, our operations commander for in the field and paperwork and everything else. And then it also covers Judy who handles a lot of the grant management paperwork and eight mandates, etc. That's all four of us are covered out of that stipend line. Anything, Deb?
All that covers it, chief.
Again, we wanted to remain as low as we could and zeroed out the the phone line, we didn't see any increases occurring in that line. But it does ring a lot.
Most Wednesdays?
Cation, what's that?
Most Wednesdays?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I wasn't gonna blame you in public, but whatever, most Wednesdays after Jason's calls, our lines light up for a couple hours, so communications. Basically $171. And I don't have that is blocked off, hold on one second.
This particular line has the the ever source suite that we just referred to is paid for out of this communication line and in anticipation of any even a minute increase, we thought it would be best just to put a slight increase on there in case there's any costs associated with that.
The same with the the next two lines, we put in a nominal 2% line in the equipment maintenance line and the supply line.
And just about just a point of the equipment maintenance line, that line is the line that we use to maintain the generators throughout the town. We increased it last year by one generator because of the addition of the generator at the town hall annex. And we thought it best, the price of things creeping up, parts, that may be a good idea to have a nominal increase on that of $140. And same thing with the supplies, I mean, the price of things are just creeping up on us. If we could keep a relatively low number of our bottom line, but increase it nominally, we thought it would be in the best interest of the town to do that.
Well, the subtotal on the expenses part is a 1.93, it's a zero on the personnel line. So in essence, it's not, it is, it's a 0.82 overall increase for the entire budget. A bit of our goals and priorities, we've kind of been, and I wish we didn't have to be, but we've been in pandemic mode, supporting the first selectman's office in communicating with the community, keeping them up to date, we've done some applications for grants and return of money that the town has spent. We have done all of our drills and everything else that we need to do for the state, our training is all there. So we're we're pretty good, the only thing that remains a concern for us in this area and that's the shelter operations in town, if we ever have to open a shelter and operate it for any length of time.
Just a caveat on that is if there's a power outage, shelter with a power outage is our is our number one concern. Where we feel confident that we could operate a shelter in many locations throughout the community, even in a power outage, especially if the area where we plan the shelter to be has power where another area doesn't. So we're confident that we could do it, but it is one of our concerns in the back of our mind.
Any questions on emergency management? Oh, I thought somebody's hand was up, that was my cursor over a name, anybody, anybody have any questions on?
No.
Chief, what's next?
See what the agenda says.
You still have the police commission agenda and community.
For police commission, I'll turn it over to Chairman Leach.
Sure, no changes on police commission, we're at 1625 plus 100 for supplies, no changes there. It's it's a very good possibility that we might be able to reduce the 1625 to 1500 even, which would be 12 meetings a year. I don't anticipate a special meeting this year, so if you'd like to make that change reduces by the the 125, I'm fine with that, but I don't think that it'll make a big difference in the budget, but it's at your discretion.
Again, that gets to the issue of the recording secretaries across the board. Have we have not revisited their compensation rate in two decades.
I I would I would concur with you on that. I know that our our recording secretary goes above and beyond making sure that we have everything square and straight and it's it's it is time consuming. So I will leave that at your discretion. And we'll we'll see what happens with the budget, I guess.
Any questions for Chairman Leach? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Let's turn to communications.
Again, that's a budget that we don't submit, but we do manage and oversee it.
Deputy Chief or Chief, I'm not sure which one of you wants to take this, I was thinking about our conversation. Can you explain a bit about the radio system line in the communications 215, that's maintenance on the system?
Yeah, certainly, we have, we contract currently Marcus Communication. For not the 20,000, it's actually less than 20,000, it's somewhere around, I believe, off the top of my head, I want to say somewhere between 15 to $17,000 is for Marcus Communication to come out 24/7 and respond to any maintenance issues we have with our existing equipment. As you know, you all know, because we've known each other for years, the radio system is aging. And it does have issues, we've had it go down on us two times this year. Marcus comes out immediately, they sometimes will try to do remote work if they can on our dispatch console. If they can't fix it remotely, they come, they respond, it's a 24/7 response. And it doesn't cost us a dime to come out and and do the response. The remainder of that money is for equipment issues, same thing, our mobile radios, our portable radios. They're aging, they do break, they're like any other electronic or piece of machinery we have, they have a tendency to fail after a certain amount of time. So that deals with the replacement of They have a tendency to fail after a certain amount of time, so that deals with the replacement of parts. On the system, the 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 main system and or the mobiles, the portables. And also the purchase of any new equipment, for example, if a portable was down. And it's damaged beyond repair, we may have to replace it for, you know, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. For a refurbished unit as opposed to repairing the one that was broken, we've done, I think we did that three or four times this year. And as the chief mentions, we manage that for all the town entities, if they want to. Spend this money, it's kind of got to go through the the pipeline. Between the chief and I before it gets to the first election to kind of just make sure that. The money is being spent not only in the right places, but equitably, not by one department. Using up all the money in the first part of the year and leaving nothing for other departments, we try to. Spread it around as best we can.
Thank you for that, that was that was great. The other piece of this budget is the the dispatch costs, so. Supervisor Freeman, Lieutenant Carl and I met with the folks at at Talon County Dispatch. I don't know, it was still warm out, so sometime late fall. And at the time, they were talking about a pretty substantial. Increase in our dispatching fees on a per capita basis that would have taken our budget from. About nine thousand dollars up to about thirty-six thousand dollars. And then we reported back through emergency management and. Chief Clinch actually had a conversation with the folks at TN and and got that line dropped from ninety-four hundred down to four hundred and eighty-two. So that that was about to go in a gross direction and then ended up going much better. And to to a point Amy made earlier in the day. That now means that each entity that uses Talon County is paying for their own dispatching costs. Rather than having the town shoulder. Shoulder that cost, so it actually to chief, Deputy Chief Hart's point is an equitable way of doing that. Any questions or comments on any of the budgets presented by Chief DeMarco and his team?
Gentlemen, thank you for doing a great job, I certainly appreciate all that you do. And I also appreciate being able to lean on you about things that are somewhat outside of. Your portfolio, but it's always nice to be able to use you guys as a soundboard and I appreciate it.
Appreciate the input, thank you.
Thank you all, and thanks for all your time.
Thank you, guys. Our next item, your own, public participation, is there anybody from the public who would like to address the board? And any of the budgets that we've heard tonight? Seeing none, we're up for a marathon presentation. On Thursday evening, starting at five thirty, that will segue into our regular meeting. Anything that we don't get finished in that intervening hour and a half between five thirty and seven, we'll just keep rolling into. At the seven o'clock start of our regular meeting. And we have another public, another budget workshop next Tuesday. And then if all goes according to plan, after that, we'll actually do deliberations on the budgets as heard before us and as presented by. Myself, our selectmen's meeting on March third. So that's kind of our plan of attack over the. With that, if there's no further business to come before the board, I'd ask for motion to adjourn.
Blackman Muska will move, we adjourn.
Is there a second? Maiden seconded, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Paget is unanimous, we're adjourned nine fifteen, thank you all very much, have a great evening.